Township, Persipony, Troy Hills. Township Council Agenda Meeting, September 11, 2012. Public Invited, Public Participation. Meeting called to order by myself, 7:30 PM. Please rise for a flag salute and then please remain standing. Mr. Ferrara, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to First Sergeant, Councilman, Mr. Vigilante.
Thank you, Sergeant, Councilman. Just wanted to have a moment of silence in a second for the people that perished on this date 11 years ago on 9/11. One of the reasons that propelled me back into the service after a 12-year hiatus, I just want to tell you a quick story. I just got a new airman that works for me. His father was a fireman in New York when they killed one of the towers. He was in third grade. He just enlisted about eight months ago, went through basic training, now he's one of my students, one of my workers. But it's just poetic how a young man in third grade lost his dad in 9/11, and he was compelled from that point on that as soon as he was legal age, 18, to join the service, which did service the country. Hopefully he doesn't go overseas, but make the ultimate sacrifice. That being said, maybe we have a moment of silence for that. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Kariti?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
Mr. Vigilante?
Present.
Mr. Stanton?
Here. Others present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Justin Marqueta, Esquire, Township Attorney, our new Township Clerk, Yancy Wazirmas. Like everyone here to welcome our new Township Clerk. The purpose is means to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting, September 18, 2012. Formal action may or may not be taken. Adequate notice of meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meeting law by following a notice in the office Township Clerk, posting the meeting notice on a bulletin board municipal building, December 15, 2011, where it's remained since that date. Legal notice appeared by Daily Record Star Ledger forwarded by fax to other local newspapers, local radio stations, December 19, 2011. Note: Council meetings are videotaped, aired on Cablevision, public access Channel 21 at 2:00 PM Sundays, available for viewing at www.porsipony.net. Ordinances and second reading. Everything set for next meeting, Yancy?
Yes, Mr. Stanton.
Okay, status of adopted ordinances. amended multi-way stop intersections, 2012/30. Adopted date, 8/21/2012. Mayor Action 8/27/2012. Effective date, 9/18/2012. Lease agreement with Persipony Soccer Club, 2012/32. Adopted date, 8/21/2012. Mayor's Action 8/27/2012. Effective date, 9/18/2012. Scheduled meetings, 9/18/2012, 7:30 PM. Regular meeting, public invited, public participation. 10/9, 7:30 PM. Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Meetings for approval, agenda meeting of 7/10/2012. Now, we have a discussion on the council's special study funds for attendance at League of Municipalities, council members, planning board, and Board of Adjustment members.
Council may recall that for two years, the township did not send anyone to the League of Municipalities unless they needed to attend for CEUs. So that meant that council members paid their own way, Mayor and I paid our own way, and Planning Board and Board of Adjustment members were not sent to the League. I did include attendance at the League for the Mayor and I under the admin budget, but I neglected to do that in the council budget. So I wanted to ask whether the council would consider utilizing the special studies line item in your budget to send not only the council members to the League, but also nine Board of Adjustment or Planning Board members. The cost is about $240 a person. That includes two nights' stay and then the $50 registration fee. If the council agrees with that, one of my recommendations, I have two. One is that you require that any people who attend the League at Township's expense provide a report within a month of the sessions that they attended. And then the second, what I wanted to recommend, one of the best practices checklist items is whether we require elected officials to attend at least one course during the year. So if we could, if the council could indicate that you would like to adopt that as a policy, I can check off that item on the checklist.
Okay, I'm in favor. Any discussion?
Yes. I've always been in favor of going to League of Municipalities and know there's some, you know, thoughts about what we do down there, what we don't do down there. You know, I for one, and I can speak on all the council members in the past and present, that, you know, we go to classes, you know, we take some of the seminars, we do that. You know, granted, you can only take the same seminar so many times. And then I know the admin folks do, I know anybody that we've ever sent, you know, because we always wind up hanging out that night. Yes, there are parties, yes, there are dinners that we attend and whatnot. I don't think ill of it, I don't think it's a bad thing, and most important, it is a networking event. You know, you talk to other council members, mayors talk to other mayors, BAs talk to other BAs, and, you know, they find out what's good, bad, and different in going on in their towns and what we have similar. I don't have a problem with it, but just when you're talking about a report, you're talking like something like an after-action report, like a summary of what?
I mean, all we need to know is the sessions that were attended. And that way, you know, if the council in fact adopts a policy about elected officials, then I have that on as a record of the council members attending.
I'd be in favor of it. This is all I wanted to say was that discussion.
Would you like us to take a form of vote?
Yeah, that would be great.
Hold on.
Discussion, okay.
We have nine on the planning board?
No, we have traditionally reserved nine rooms for the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board.
In total?
Yes, in total.
So we, not everybody goes?
Correct.
Okay, I guess we're gonna go on a rotating base, or?
It's really up to the, well, you can determine it, or the chairs of each board can determine that. I recommend that the Chair and the Vice Chair always go, but then the other members rotate through.
That's how we did it in the past, and usually they pick, and they have rotated, so it's not the same people going every year.
Well, that's what my concern is.
No, the Chairman.
I don't want the same people to go every year.
Right, exactly. The respective Chairman in the past has usually done that, and, you know, the only time somebody might have gone two years in a row is if somebody didn't go, couldn't go for whatever obligation, family or job commitment, then they had another shot to go again. But usually, if that's the case, you know, three or four go each year, and it's a different three or four.
If that's the case, I have no problem, but I just want to make sure that everybody gets a fair chance.
Roll call.
Mr. Kariti?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante?
Affirmative.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Okay, Administration, everything set for next week?
Mayor, are you clear?
I skipped Mayor. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, I would like to read a little something in regards to 9/11 on Memorial Outside that we held today. The gentleman that secured the peace at the World Trade Center could not be in attendance, but he sent me a letter this morning that I feel obligated to read, if you don't mind, Council President. Today is the 11th anniversary of the worst terrorist attack this country has felt on its soil, and this horrific event will be remembered for another year. This horrific event sent shockwaves around the civilized world, and these civilized citizens of this planet share our loss today, and may all their prayers be answered. His name is Taran Ayaz, a Persipony resident, and he works for the Port Authority. And this is him. "My personal memories of that day are merely a never-ending torturous dream like a nightmare that repeats itself on a daily basis, relentlessly trying to overcome my body and soul, although the battle to maintain my normalcy is a constant battle to each and every day, and I'm always thankful to be able to experience these mixed emotions. At least I have that, and yet I feel totally alive. This anniversary is here, and again I confront it head-on. To my surprise, my world has become stronger, and those that are near and dear to my heart have filled my world with their presence, and although I have never discussed this day in great detail, I know they feel the pain I feel. No one to this date has had the courage to ask the heart-wrenching questions that fill their eyes, but I feel they cannot because they see the pain in my eyes. My office was on the 65th floor facing east, directly facing the Brooklyn Bridge. Each and every morning, I took a moment to admire the bridge and enjoy the sunrise when I could. Yes, it is a priceless view, and some days soon, very soon, we will all enjoy the view once again. I remember that day vividly, and there are no words that can ever describe the events of that day. I remember on that day all the thoughts of my family rushing through my soul. I cannot reach my parents, but when I heard my wife's voice, I told her that something had happened at the World Trade Center, and I will be home later, and the line was disconnected. The view, east, was not the same anymore. The objects falling from the sky were now other objects, I will not describe it. And it was apparent that this was more than we could ever imagine, much, much more. I remember these conditions in the stairwell, the firemen, the injured, the constant dripping of liquid that was not water, the expressions on my fellow World Trade Center residents, and reading my last prayer all the way as we exited the complex. I stopped, the view of the plaza level told the story of the magnitude of what this event was, this event was. But once completely out of the complex, and once I was on Church Street, I looked back, and the view was numbing, and the outcome was apparent. I remember every image, every sound, every odor. As we moved north on Church Street, and the roaring rumble again, only the World Trade Center one, with the communication tower, could be faintly seen. I fell to my knees and I prayed for all the lost ones. As I continued my prayers, once again the roaring rumble began, and I did not move, nor could I move. I continued my prayer for all those who lost their lives, and I said my last prayer for my soul. Time stood still. I remember running back, and I was hit with the unrecognizable odor that is still embedded within me. I remember the backbreaking work of shifting through rubble to find small bits of human remains. I remember all the funerals, yes, all those funerals, with the bag pipers at each one, and the many intertenants who stood silent while the pipers played to each lost one one last time. I remember my fallen fellow friends and those who perished with them, and all our young men and women who have since given the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, our flag. We need never to forget, each and every day, I beg you, please say your prayer for those who perished and for those they left behind, to find the strength and to live. As a child, on April of 1975, I have visited this site with my family, during our trip from Australia. This is where I fell in love with the architect. Who knew that one day my family would migrate to the United States? Who knew that I would study architecture, and I would one day work in this complex called the World Trade Center? This must be a kismet. And who knew that I would be part of the rebuilding team after the 1993 terrorist attack and after 9/11? Today, as a site heals, I feel that I heal, and I hope at the time we all will. To have a piece of the World Trade Center in Persipony is a symbol to never, ever forget. Your prayers are our pillars that keep us upright, and I thank each and every person from place deep within my heart for taking a moment to offer your prayers to God, my God always provides to you and your family and your heart desires." This was the gentleman, Taran Ayaz, that secured the 9/11 memorial that's out front, and I want to thank him. I know he couldn't attend, and God bless him.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, Administration, everything set for next week?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to highlight a couple of items. The first is introduction of an ordinance, and this is for the acquisition of up to 20 substantially damaged homes from Hurricane Irene, and it's using part of the $7.2 million grant we received from FEMA for, under their hazard mitigation program, with a 25% match from Morris County Open Space Program. And so, right now, we have 20 properties on the list that some properties will drop off, and we may end up adding additional properties. All right. The other item I wanted to highlight was that we're asking for authorization to amend the agreement with Community Hope that council authorized in July. There's a change in location, and also a change in the population that is designated to be served. And then the last, we wanted to add a resolution to the consent agenda for next week, and that's authorizing a lease with the Morris County MUA for the transfer station. We own property across the street from the transfer station, which is where the weigh stations are right now. And the lease is for a little over $200,000 a year, and it goes up according to the CPI every year.
Is that, who pays that bill? Is it the Morris County MUA, or is it the firm that has the bid there?
In the past, it was the firm, it was Waste Management. But Morris County MUA wanted to take, the lease actually expires in January, and so Morris County MUA suggested that it would be best for the township to lease directly to the MUA rather than to the private contractor.
Good, okay.
Okay, Township Office?
I just have a couple. One thing. It was brought up in the last council meeting, and just wanted to put it maybe on the agenda for more discussion, we can talk about it now, the Sheep Farm property. Years ago, we, the reason we bought that property was because the farm that was on at the Sheep Farm, you know, with the building, there was a lot of flooding going on there, and that building was so close to the road, the old barn, it tore the barn down, and the house still sits there. And the intent and purpose of that house was to use it for different township committees, you know, volunteer organizations use as a meeting place. I haven't been in there in a few years, I'm sure, whether it's Parks and Rec or DPW, I'm sure the heat's on, and the pipes, you know, are, you know, it's in pretty good shape, it was that way a couple of years ago. Have we used it for anything that we thought we were gonna use it for, or is it just sitting there, or, I mean, do we have intentions for it? And is it being maintained? I'm sure it is, but I just wanted to ask the question.
Well, I know that, I spoke to Joe Janner Jr. in regards, he has maintained it. I know they made, they built the sidewalk for ADA accessible, and I know the soccer clubs are interested in leasing it out. The problem is that you can't lease that type of property, it has to be a license. And they, at that time, I don't think they were interested in a license, but now I spoke to Dave Ferguson Saturday, and they're going to rethink it and have a license with the township, because it was purchased with Open Space Trust Fund money.
Can you say what's the difference between lease and a license?
Huh?
What's the difference between lease and license?
You know, that's a good question.
Well, I'll tell you, the very basic, the lease is considered to be disposal, disposal of the property, and that would have to go to referendum under our Open Space Trust Fund. And a license is something that's much more, it's not really, well, Justin, you explain what the license is.
Yeah. Care to do it in English, though?
Just a modest Jimmy.
As Jasmine indicated, a lease gives an illegal interest in the property, which the township cannot convey absent a referendum under the Open Space Trust Law. However, a license is more like a permit for use. The township still holds the legal interest of the property, it can revoke the license at will, and it could set conditions on the license that you couldn't otherwise set on a lease.
All right, so a couple of questions I have. So we license it to, let's say, the soccer club, and baseball club wants it, just, you know, whatever, or football club, do we have to give it to them because we gave it to them, or are they allowed to use it for the whole year? Because once they go and set up?
No, once, I guess, once you have the license, it belongs to the person, the license would just be the soccer club can only use it.
And are they still using the place on Baldwin Road right now?
Right now, they're still using it, yes.
The old DPW, but I guess the only question I have is, they have quite a few cars, okay? They, I don't know how many, but I guess my question would be is, you know, they're gonna be parking 40, 50 cars, because they do use the PAL lot, I remember years ago. You know, if it's just a board, it might be like seven, eight, 10 cars at one time, but if they're gonna use it to the effect where they're gonna have big meetings there, you might have a problem with the neighbors over there parking 40, 50 cars and having something, I know it's not commercial, but yet, you might, so you just might give that some thought, you know, or maybe get an idea of a head count of how many cars they may have over there. So, you know, you don't want to license it to them, and next you know they're parking 60, 70 cars over there in the street, and then you have the neighbors coming here complaining about it. So just food for thought.
Well, I guess that would be part of the?
License.
License, you know what I mean? That would be, have to be, I mean, it's a great question, but I think that would be part of the license, and saying, you could hold your ordinance meeting, but anything else, you gotta go to the PAL or wherever you're going to, to a school like you're doing it now. That's a great question, I agree with you.
Is it gonna be like a dollar a year kind of thing, or?
Yes. Oh, no, no.
Can we make it $2?
I think we talked about 300 or 500 a month?
300, I think we did talk about a certain fee.
Do they maintain it, or we maintain it after they take it over?
They would maintain it.
Huh? They would maintain it. They would maintain it plus that, okay.
So if the water heater broke, they're gonna pay for it, not send Joe Janner and our guys in there?
Any major items, we would.
Capital improvements?
Yep.
But painting and stuff like that, they're going, and cleaning, okay?
Those that don't paint that color, we don't want.
And they're gonna be responsible for utilities also?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Township Office Reports. Major Soil Moving Permit Extension, Kane Cave Developers, Block 98 Lots 2223. Planning Board granted one-year extension to the Major Soil Moving Permit until August 18, 2013. Office has no objection to the extension, recommends the Township Council extend the permit, agreement till August 18, 2013 by resolution. Any discussion? In favor? Okay, roll call.
You don't need?
Just do it verbal?
You don't need to do that tonight. That's, that'll go on to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Chief Financial Officer?
She has the resolution prepared.
Okay. Attorney, nothing?
No report.
Okay, application, limousine license renewal, UNLlimo.com Corp.
Yes.
$4,400, that was the reimbursement for the Labor Day DUI checkpoints, is that what that's for? That's incoming money that we're accepting?
I'm not, I don't think so. It's called Alcohol Traffic Safety and Drunk Driving Prevention Incentive Grant.
Is that the money that you get to do those DWI stops, the state or the federal government?
That's what that was.
Okay, application, limousine license renewal, UNLimo01.com Corp., 239 New Road, Building C, Suite 208, Persipony, New Jersey 07054. Set for next week. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak. If anyone else is gonna come up to speak, please come up to the front row.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots Road. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but listening to the Mayor's letter that he read, I always feel personally on September 11th, a sense of dread, and, you know, just on a personal note, my in-laws were in town. They were from another country, and they were visiting us, and my wife was on her way to taking them to the World Trade Center that morning. I couldn't get ahold of them for several hours, and just by pure luck that there was traffic in the Holland Tunnel that they never made it, made it in. And many of you know that I used to own a Jewish restaurant in town, and for weeks after, after the event, dozens of deliveries that weren't exactly called shiva deliveries, but that we delivered food throughout Morris and Essex County to these families, I'll never forget that, it was dreadful. But I'd like to say a few words about something that came up. A few months ago, I came up here and I said that I do not believe that a couple with a young child living in a one-bedroom apartment constitutes stacking. I want to give a little background information on current ordinance that we have right now. On December 19, 2006, Councilman Vigilante Di Piero and former Council Members Cicero, Graci, and Agostini unanimously approved ordinance 2006:25. This ordinance strengthened the township's anti-stacking laws, in part by adding a child under two years old as being calculated as a person when looking at stacking. The new ordinance also stated that any tenant who receives a notice of eviction shall be considered a displaced person and shall be entitled to relocation assistance in an amount equal to six times the monthly rental paid by the displaced person. The landlord was to be liable for payment of this relocation assistance, but if the landlord doesn't pay the tenant the six months' rent, township should. At this year's March 31 budget meeting, which I attended, Council President Brian Stanton questioned what relocation assistance meant in the budget. Business Administrator Jasmine Lim explained that, quote, "This line item was added to the budget when the overcrowding ordinance was first implemented since the township would be responsible for placing tenants that would be potentially displaced in the event of a violation," unquote. I believe, I'm pretty sure that there's $2,000 budgeted in for the relocation assistance fund to share. Getting back to the night that the ordinance was passed, immediately afterwards, an attorney representing one of the apartment complexes spoke during the public portion and questioned whether the new law applied to children under two years old. She also asked for clarification on a new landlord amnesty program. Our township attorney at the time explained, quote, "With respect to the amnesty program, an illegal occupant may take action against the landlord for the displacement fee. This is something that this council cannot wipe away through an amnesty program," and she noted that "this is an independent right that a displaced tenant would have against the landlord." She explained that if the township realizes that, and has a cooperating landlord, and understands that the landlord has had no part and plays no part in the overcrowding, and is looking for assistance from the township in order to get into the amnesty program and rid his property of overcrowded situations, the township would have the right not to pursue a fine against the landlord. The amnesty ordinance cannot dictate what the statutory right is between the landlord and tenant. Regarding the question relative to whether or not a child under two is exempted, the township attorney agreed that the state does provide that a child under two may be exempted, but our ordinance is stricter than the state standard, and it was the township's prerogative to have a stricter standard. The council, if it wants to amend this, can certainly do so at any time in the future, but the zoning department at the time recommended the ordinance as drafted and was passed. I have a very simple solution. Instead of taking a sledgehammer approach and creating waivers, as was tried the last few months, why can't the council just amend the ordinance to exclude a child under a certain age?
30 seconds.
Okay. We're talking about adding one sentence to an already existing ordinance. I, like many people in town, am concerned about true stacking violators. I would like to point out that there is a state statute which provides that the township can go after a landlord for reimbursement of public school tuition costs if it could be proven that the landlord knows there is real overcrowding occurring in his apartment complex. There is a New Jersey law on the books, it's Chapter 39:4-85. I break that law every day, and I'm sure every single person in this room violates it as well.
Just finish your sentence, please.
The state statute reads in part that "The driver of an overtaking motor vehicle not within a business or residence district shall give audible warning with his horn before passing or attempting to pass a vehicle going in the same direction." It's the law, but even just because it's the law doesn't make it a good law or a law that should even be enforced. Last sentence, I promise. I am sitting here tonight because of an overly zealous housing supervisor who's forcing young couples with six-month-old babies out of their homes. I hope the police makes sure to give this housing supervisor a ticket for not tooting her own horn next time she's in her car driving to an apartment inspection. I also hope the Mayor hires a new housing supervisor. I would like to point out that state statute requires landlords and townships to notify displaced tenants?
Jonathan, I have to cut you off.
Okay, last sentence. That relocation assistance is available next time Spacks kicks another young couple and their baby to the curb.
I'm just a little concerned about reading in the paper all these, you know, $200,000 settlements, there have been $500,000 settlements. Got to tell you, it doesn't exist in the private sector, and I don't want to blame, put the blame at your feet, because I know it's been going on a long time before that, but I'm wondering if somehow we could come up with some administrative steps or some kind of training for employees to avoid these kind of lawsuits in the first place.
kind of training for employees to avoid these kind of lawsuits in the first place, and no hurt feelings, no large settlements.
Well, let me just say this, and I really can't respond to some of the comments you made. What the private sector doesn't have, that the public sector has, is civil service. Public sector doesn't have civil service. I mean, the private sector doesn't have that, so, but we do have classes, and we do give them, huh? Yeah, every two years we do give class out. We had one this year, but, you know, you can't compare public and private, because private doesn't have civil service, and civil service, unless you have civil service reform, and I think, I want to understand, that's the governor's next, you need to have civil service reform, because, you know, Roman, no matter what you seem to do, if you make a promotion or you do something, someone just doesn't like it and they want to sue. In my opinion, you know, when you make these, you do these things, when they sue, I think we should be able to go back after them as well.
Am I, am I in my, do we have any more lawsuits going? Can I ask, or no?
Well, you're sure you can ask.
Oh, okay. Can I get an answer?
We almost always have lawsuits.
Yeah. It'd be nice to be without one.
How many? You don't know? Okay.
Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to close the public session. At this time, I'll take the ultimate motion.
I make a motion.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Forrest, and by Mr. Carifi. Roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Vigilante? Mr. Stanton?
Yes, good night, everyone.